Good morning. I called on our meetings, May 1st. Give your own call, please.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
President.
Vice Chair Harris?
President.
Chair Weymeyer?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Present.
All right, let's have pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's bow our heads. Well, we thank you so much for watching over us and our community through the storms last night. We ask that you would direct us today, give us joy in our hearts as we serve your people. Lead us, guide us, in Jesus' precious name. Amen. Nice and quick. Any correspondence?
No, sir.
Consent agenda today includes claim vouchers, Nevada, three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars, sixty cents. Tax change orders, negative thirty-two-hundred-nine dollars, ninety-four cents. Meeting minutes from April 24th. Study session minutes, April 29th. Payroll, one million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars, three cents. Seventy-five hundred towards TGT dollars towards Ottawa Main Streets mural project. Approval of presidential preference primary expenses for state reimbursement. Is there a motion to approve? So, well. Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
All right, down to items of business, the first of which is with Kristi Hilleker, our EMS chief. Good morning, Kristi.
Good morning. So just a few things to discuss this morning. The first thing that I have is just the first quarter report from 2024. Starting with our call volume, you can see that it is up considerably from where it was the same time last year. Last year, we were only averaging about eight point seven calls a day, whereas in the same quarter of 2024, we're up to over 12 calls a day, so quite a bit of a jump there. Moving on to our financials, we were able to bring in three hundred sixteen thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents, which actually puts us over our budget for what we anticipated for the first quarter by forty-one thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-two cents. So hopefully, we're starting to make up some of that revenue that we didn't see in 2023. There is something new that I do want to report to you that I have added on this. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself just a little bit. Adjustments. As far as adjustments go, we had a hundred twenty-three thousand, four hundred forty-four dollars and 12 cents. And of course, that's just the contractual write-offs that we have with our insurers. So what is new on here that I am providing for you is you'll see that there's something called an average Blue Cross Blue Shield QB RP. And what that is, is it is a quality-based reimbursement program from Blue Cross and Blue Shield, and it's designed to promote efficient administration, quality, better patient care and outcomes. And as a contracting Blue Cross Blue Shield providers, we have an opportunity to earn extra revenue for some add-on allowances that meet some qualifying metrics. So what it is, is the maximum allowed payment or the contractual payment that we agree. They give us a certain percentage over that based off of these metrics. You can see for the first quarter of 2024, we were able to make five point nine-three percent in additional revenue. So that came in at one thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and five cents. And that was just extra money that we received for using their portal for claims. Also, we have our name listed as a provider on their claim portal. So if you go to Blue Cross Blue Shield, you'll see Franklin County EMS there. And also, any correspondence that they need for, maybe they need more information for a patient care report. If we use the portal for that, we get an extra bump with that. So those are the three ways we can make a little bit extra. And depending on how many times we use it, we get anywhere from seven percent is the maximum that we could get back. But most of the time, from what I understand, we've been sitting around six percent. But I thought that this was a very interesting metric that you probably would like to see. Does anybody have any questions about this?
That call volume put us back up to our historic average?
I think it's actually going to put us a little bit above. We will talk a bit, too, about move-ups and how they have to be because we had 131 move-ups in the first quarter of 2024 that are included in this number. But still, even if I subtract out that 131, we're still way over where we were in previous years. So it looks like if things continue the way they are, we're going to have a pretty busy year.
Yeah.
So I do have the adjustments report and the collections report.
All right, we would need a motion to approve the adjustments, adjustment and collections report for Q1 of '24. Or motion?
Motion approved.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
All right, then I'll give them to the clerk. Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, I do have our commission report, too, just, and this is operational information. So these are the ones that have all the graphics on them. And we're going to start with the runs by day of the week. Again, I talked last year about how there really seems to be no rhyme or reason, and it's still holding true. In 2024, first quarter, our busiest day by far was Monday. At the same time, in 2023, busiest day was Friday. And if you look at the runs by hour of the day, have no idea why 10 to 11 o'clock in the morning was so busy, but that was our busiest time for the first quarter of 2024. When we start looking by runs by county, you can see that we had 1,091 calls here in Franklin County. Two were in Miami County for 2024. Both of those calls in Miami County were in that auto aid district that we have with Miami County. On the runs by zone, you're going to see a huge spike in Ottawa South. And again, this goes back to how we now have to report those move-ups. Those have to be reported the same way we would a standby, so they go in the system. So again, we had 131 of those, and you'll see it later on in the charts where we staged to improve coverage, which is the same thing as a move-up. And since the address for where we were going is technically in District One, that's why there was such a huge increase in District One. However, even if we subtract out that 131 calls, you can see that it would still be quite significant here in Ottawa South. Next busiest was Advent and then Ottawa North.
Amazing how such a large sample data, I mean, how an entire community uses the EMS service can vary.
Absolutely.
You know, any major changes. We're just living life like we always have.
Absolutely. If we look by how we, our response requests, 771 of those were emergency calls. 161 of those were inter-facility transports. And then 144 of those were standbys. Those were our top three. And I do have a breakdown of what our standbys look like as well. It's coming up. Our runs by unit disposition, these are going to be, we had 847 times that we actually made contact with a patient. We had 151, what are called no-patient incidents. So those are going to be our standbys. And then 60 calls resulted in no patient found. So that means literally either we went on the call and could not find a patient, or we got to the scene of a call and they didn't meet the definition of a patient. So just for example, with that is, a lot of times you'll drive by and see somebody laying on the road, and we'll get the 911 call will come in, so somebody's in the road. We get there and we find out that they were just changing a tire. So we still generate a report for it, but in this case, it's not a patient. You'll see on the next one, our standby purposes. We did 12 fire standbys, two public safety supports, two things that fell into the category of others. So those are going to be probably PRs that we did with the community. And then you can see the EMS staging to improve coverage. There was 131 of those. If we're looking by how we took care of our patients, we evaluated and provided care for 689 of those. 135 people that we saw refused our evaluation or care. Seven of them, we did evaluate, but then they said they didn't need any care. And six of them, again, they let us, sorry, seven of those, there was no care required once we evaluated them. Six of them, we felt like there was some care needed, but they just said, we don't feel like that's necessary. Moving on to the transport disposition, we did transport 665 patients. 148 patients refused transport, and then 40 patients, there was no need to transport, so we did not do that. Our average run summary, we're averaging 5.8 miles to get to the scene of a call. The maximum that we traveled to get to a call was 23.3 miles. And the maximum that we went from the scene just to get to a hospital was 60 miles. And our maximum overall distance from the time we left the station to the time that we returned was 128.3 miles. Our destination names, again, you see that there's a no-transport has quite a big spike, but that correlates back to those standbys that now have to be included in that metric. Most of our patients did go to Advent Health here in Ottawa. We did have an increase in Advent Health Shawnee Mission from the same quarter of 2023. In Olathe Medical Center, still, those continue to be our top three hospitals that we transport to. On our average runtime summary, what I want to draw your attention to here is the very first one that says unit notified to en route. And you can see in 2023 that you have a metric of 3.4. So it was taking us more than three minutes to get en route to a call. That's from the time that the tones drop to the time we go en route. And while the state says that you have five minutes to do that, that was an area that we have tried very hard to get improvement in. And luckily, you can see that in 2024, the same timeframe, we were able to cut that by more than half. So response time was much quicker. We're averaging a minute and a half in this quarter. Our runs by service level, again, overwhelming majority of calls are advanced life support, either paramedic or AEMT level. And then we get into our overlapping calls. We did 131 move-ups. We went to status zero 21 times. This was quite a significant increase from 2023, where in 2023, we only did 70 move-ups in the first quarter and 13 times at status zero. And then the very last page was just how we utilized when we were at status, when we were in system status. We spent 313 minutes in 2023 in system status where we had no units available, all were out on calls. But in 2024, that increased to 455 minutes. Still relatively insignificant because it's still just 0.35% of our time was spent without coverage. And just for reference, if we do have, mutual aid can respond if needed. Plus, we do have an administrator on call that can come in and help assist as well.
Questions for Kristi?
Good information.
Kristi, how do you handle stoplights?
I'm sorry?
How do you handle stoplights, going through stoplights?
Typically, when we go through stoplights, we will slow down or come to a complete stop, even if we're traveling emergent, and make sure that traffic is yielding the right-of-way to us, and then proceed through the intersection. We also try to change our alert tone just to try to get more information, and we have an air horn that we can utilize, too. I'm fond of the air horn, just because it's loud and tends to get your attention, but we have it.
You can't change it to green?
No, we, so there is a device called an Opticom that will automatically change it, but the road lights have to be equipped with it as well. So while it's advantageous sometimes in the metro area, here in our community, there wouldn't be a whole lot of use for it. So that's something that would just be an extra cost for very little benefit.
Any other questions for Kristi?
Can you tell us about the move-ups and how that's working?
So right now.
Not moving up, I guess I'd say.
So I think that this is something that we're working with the fire department. They were going through a transition process to get a new chief. So we are still working with them. As of right now, it's something that is agreeable for them, so we do need to have further discussions about that. But still trying to get some things wrapped up on that end so that we can have a, give you all the information that you need. You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, that was the informational portion of the, so we don't need to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we need to purchase some tires from a handful of vendors to replace our stock. Do you want to tell if there's anything special about these, Jeff?
I don't think there's anything special. We had eight different bids. We sent it to all of the, three or four, I think it was three that actually tied on each bid.
All right, maybe we'll put these on consent agenda next time. Do need to vote to approve purchasing the tires from the three vendors listed. Is there a motion?
So.
I get.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
All right, for our third item, we'll continue our conversation from Monday about the starting salary of corrections officers.
Yeah, thanks, Cole. I have nothing to add from Monday. That's the five of you know, we had a robust discussion. We have the room and our budget to do this this year, and we'll make adjustments in '25. And so happy to answer any questions you have, but thought we had a great discussion just Monday on this. Would take a motion if you want to make one.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve raising the starting salary of corrections officers from 1712 to $20 even, and giving all existing adult detention center employees the same increase?
That's what to approve.
Need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah.
Commissioner Dickinson?
All right, fourth item is to consider approving replacement of HVAC, an HVAC system here at the annex.
Morning.
Good morning.
We recently had a rooftop HVAC unit for this building that developed a refrigerant leak. And then while investigating that issue, was also, we discovered that the heat exchanger in this unit is not in great shape. It needs to be, should probably be replaced before the next heating season. So the cost of those repairs, just to repair those two items is around the $8,000 mark. This is on a 12-year-old unit. Its expected life is about around 15 or so. So to replace that unit, we're looking at about $12,610 or so. I was able to gather up another bid just before, well, it was right after this agenda went out, so it didn't make it before you guys, but it was a little bit higher than the original one that we got, so.
Did we look into the others, open the other units?
I haven't been around to look at those yet. We're going to.
Say, in the past, we had done several of them at the same time just because of the cost to mobilize a crane, get a crane here and get it moved up to the.
Yeah, as far as age, there are some other rooftop units that could be replaced at some point. I mean, they're probably, we could be seeing issues with them, but those units are going to be significantly more than this one, for sure. This one, this one here, we didn't have it recharged or anything right now, so they don't have any cooling at this time, which is part of the reason we're trying to get this one moving a little bit quicker. But yeah, there are other units that could be replaced in time, yeah.
So is this one smaller than the others?
It is smaller, yeah. It is smaller. This one does the public works, planning and zoning office area.
All right, any other questions?
The question is whether to repair what's there or replace it.
Correct, yeah. I mean, my recommendation really, I mean, considering it being a 12-year-old unit, would just, if you all are comfortable with it, to move forward with replacement on this one. If we repair it, there's other components that are expensive that could fail next month, next week, you know.
It's wore out.
Yeah, it's wore out. That's exactly right.
Oh, wow. Was there a motion to approve the replacement of the HVAC unit on the annex here in the amount stated in the proposal?
Motion.
Second. Commissioner Sotomayor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Harris?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Off to staff reports. Greg?
Yeah, I don't have too much today, Cole. Working quite a bit with Jeff, helping get him comfortable. We're working quite a bit on Old Highway 50. At one point, we had thought about bringing that today, but in talking to Kilo, their start date isn't, they're not looking to do any portion of it until late July, probably. So we're going to take at least an extra week to make sure we have everything in order. But certainly, we're still working on that. Joanna's done a lot of good work, how we want to communicate that, putting together a communications plan. Other than that, Cole, I don't have anything this morning. Thank you.
All right. Brandon?
I'd like to ask one question, Brandon. Is, I haven't been out there a while, but see, have you guys been doing some work out at the visitor center?
We're trying, we're chasing a leak on siding. Is that maybe something that you saw driving by there?
Yeah, well, I know, it's been a while since I've been out, so I don't know what you've done or haven't done. But I know there was several things that, like on the railing, there's a couple of balls were going and some things, I don't know about paint or anything like that. Yeah, I hadn't been there a while, so I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's definitely on the list of some things to do. Some of their flower beds out front are getting in pretty shabby condition as well. So that's one of the things this spring, we're planning to get over there and try to address some of those things.
Okay. First thing you see when you walk in.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nice-looking building and just a few little things up front can make it a lot easier, so.
Thank you.
For sure.
All right. Pat? Campbell?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Well, today's 1st of May, of course, that means free dump month is over. Another sigh relief for the solid waste people. It went fairly good again this year. I'll just start with our free dump that we had last Friday and Saturday. Numbers were down, but the weather had everybody kind of befuddled, I mean, which I don't blame them. Really didn't want a lot of people out there, and all of a sudden, we have a big storm blow up. So I was thankful for that, that it never happened. On Friday, we had roughly about 100 vehicles come through, and compared to last year, we had about 150, so it was down about a third. Saturday, we had 150 to 75. Back in 2023, last year, we had over 250. So I kind of, like I say, these are just kind of guesstimations, you know, as they're coming in. Overall, people's demeanors were wonderful out there. People are in good moods despite being cooler and rainy and just damp and everybody being nervous about the weather. For the total, for the roll-offs that we had brought in, we had 80 loads brought in this year for a total of 200.88 tons. That is up from last year from 182 and a half tons. So for a total combined for the city's total this year, it was a cost savings for them for about $9,800. So that was great. And I kind of wondered after I looked at those numbers more, and I kind of maybe attribute some of those lower numbers over the weekend for these higher numbers that people utilized early, so, which is possible. Like I said, that's about it. Like I say, it was, I want to thank, you know, all my transfer station employees, all the road and bridge people that came out and helped us through all this also. City of Ottawa, they were great partners again this year. They gave us four of their employees for both days to come out and work to help unload vehicles. Commissioner Dunn brought us some doughnuts, so appreciate that. The guys like that, so appreciate that. But like I say, it's, we're gearing up again for next year. And of course, City of Ottawa's, you know, always the winner. They had 40 loads, followed with Wellsville with 12, so. But Wellsville, they also, they've opted to extend their free dump for at least one day, maybe two days. I just don't recall. But we don't allow them, I'm not sure how many City of Wellsville actually paid for to have them dumped on their dime as well. But we, you know, we allowed them those 12 loads to come in. So like I said, overall, it was a very successful year again, and like I say, no, no big hiccups. Everything went great and on to better things again, so.
You can send me those numbers.
Yeah, yeah, I sure can. I sure can.
And I know, maybe it's going to be at a future meeting, the deal on the reappointments.
Yes, yes.
It's going to be a future meeting.
Yeah, I was hoping to get that on this, for this week, but after, it just, everything went so quick last week, I couldn't get on it. And I'll try to get it for next week's meeting. And then also, I'll be also here, we're looking at purchasing another, a bucket, a bigger bucket for our backhoe out there because our backup bucket is shot. So we need, we're just going to, we're going to upsize a little bit. So I'll be in front of you again next week for that, as long as the mule don't fall in the well. So any other questions for me? All righty, thank you all.
Thanks. Sheriff?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm going to start by saying thank you for what you have done with the pay for our correction staff. I know that our staff that we have, it's very much appreciated, and I do believe it's going to help us as far as recruiting and then again with retention and things. So thank you, guys, for that. Appreciate it. On this last Saturday, we did have our awards banquet for the sheriff's office. We, this is an annual thing, which I had told you about. We were able to celebrate some of the good things that our staff has done throughout the year. This year was the first time since I've been in office that we actually awarded the Medal of Valor, which is the highest award we have, and those are for basically for acts of heroism. And we had three of those that we awarded Saturday. And that's, in each of those situations, it was, and it was deputies that were dealing with armed individuals, and they risked, at their own risk, they ended up saving lives for that. And so based on those acts, we presented those on Saturday. So we are proud of the staff that we have. Our jail commander is here, and since she's here, I'm going to embarrass her, not to discourage her from coming back. But she was, we awarded her with a meritorious service award based on everything that has been done in the jail as far as with some of the new systems that we have to make us more efficient, the leadership programs that have been put in place and for those things, and how it's raised the level of professionalism. And along those lines, one of those programs is a National Institute of Jail Operations. It's a training system to become nationally certified. And Ashley Collins is our first corrections officer to actually complete that program. And she has successfully done that, and so she's the first one to receive that designation as a nationally certified corrections officer. And so we are proud of the work that she has done. I believe it was Monday, Commissioner Dickinson, you'd asked the percentage of people that come to the jail that ultimately want to go to the road. And Collins is one of those who she has already been, excuse me, already been selected to go to the road. And we've been kind of waiting because we can't back, we haven't been able to backfill the jail. But here in the near future, she will be going to the road, but I'm proud of her for giving. getting that designation while she's in the position that she's in, so, really, I think that's all that I have, unless you guys have questions.
I just think publicly to know that the, the raised consideration was a long discussion, worked out with you guys and us, and it wasn't something we'd done on a whim, and I believe, most people don't know that we were at the very bottom of the scale dollar-wise for our dealers, for all counties around it, and most people don't realize you're only 50% staff at this time.
Well, at the corrections officer rank, that was, yeah.
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 Yeah, we, we hold out until the last minute, basically, and I'm not proud of that, and I'm not, I don't think you all should be proud of that, and that's not on you, it's on me, but yes, this is something that 12, 14 months, they've been dealing with staffing issues, and certainly, the conversations go back further than that, and as I said on Monday, this isn't the only position, and so, need you all to start wrapping your mind around that, because I don't want to wait. I come in, Tammy, Kyle, and Jeff, they've done a fantastic job working through this, hope to not be in this position again, but as you all know better than anyone, like, that's such a difficult balance to find, when you've got property values going up, you want to bring the mill levy down, we all want to bring it down, but how you balance in, taking care of your employees, getting the goods and services you need, that gets very difficult, and, and I think we do it as well as anyone, and certainly, you all have been very generous, and today is another example of that, so, would echo Jeff, I appreciate it, makes my job easier, certainly makes his easier, and yeah, it's, there's more coming, but, but yes, it's, these things aren't easily arrived at, they're the products of oftentimes years of discussion.
I was going to say this during my comments, but I was able to attend the sheriff's award banquet, in addition to the Medal of Valor, there were numerous, the lifesaving awards and the meritorious awards, and, and you really don't realize what our deputies really are out there facing on a day-to-day basis, in fact, I turned to my husband, I was like, do you think special families are finding out about some of these situations tonight? You know, where, where they were actually physically in danger, you know, so, you know, we see them out there, you forget that truly they are out there putting their life on the line, so we appreciate that.
And we have, we got great staff, and we appreciate all the sacrifices and the work that they put in, so.
Thank you.
Christie, anything else? Amy? All right, Jeff?
Just a few things, we did have a little bit of overtime this week with the floods that we had down around the Potawatomi, it did crest over Douglas Road Sunday evening about 6:00, so we had crews down there until after midnight, one or two, some of them kind of, we didn't receive, or we haven't found any substantial road damages since the water's receded, but we are still looking and still moving debris. Dust control is about two-thirds of the way done, we will, everything in the Wellsville area is completed, we still have work to do south of John Brown and in the west half of the county, hopefully, around the raindrops, we can get that done in the next few days, and that'll free up a lot of time for all of us, and we got our bucket truck back yesterday that you approved, just in time for picking up after the storm, so thank you for that. St. Joan picked it up, and it's working properly, so, I think that's all I have.
Did it go over Virginia Route?
It did, and it, and we tested, it wasn't a true test, but it did-
The fortifications?
It held.
Good.
So, it wasn't, there'll be stronger tests in the future.
Sure.
Yeah, it did go over, and everything worked as it should.
Potawatomi likes to get out of its banks. Anything, Jeff? All right, Commissioners?
I had a couple of meetings at the same time on Wednesday, KAC Board and the Pearl and Works Board, I listened to one on the computer and the other one in my ear, probably didn't learn anything from either one of them, but I did attend them, and then I did go down to Burlington to the Southeast Kansas meeting, and that's always a good event that kind of gets not only the Commissioners together, but I know Pat was there, and there was several from our county that were there, several from the appraiser's office, so, it was kind of in the middle of a storm, the raindrops were pretty good coming back, but got down there and back, and then chamber coffee on Friday was to introduce the new athletic director at OU, she was a very energetic lady, the NIA that the OU is a part of, only 10% of their athletic directors are women, and only six are women of color, so she truly is a maverick in her field, and I think she'll be a great addition to the, and also, the interim president was there, also a lady, so love to see those ladies in leadership, and that's all, oh, and just one more thing, Public Works, let them know, these rain events, that's, you know, that's tough for them, but appreciate all of their extra hours and the work that they do, hopefully, every time, you know, as a commissioner, I'm like, every time a big storm comes, I'm like, please, not Franklin County, please, please, and so far, we've dodged the bullet, so.
I'll let them know, but thank you for saying that.
Thank you, all right, that's it, it's all good.
Is there a second? All right, on favor? Aye. Aye, word adjourned.